One nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. I think for the future, I'm gonna have the council rotate the pledge allegiance. Well, thank you so much. So Luke, if you could go ahead and give a read through of the agenda, and then we'll ask if Melissa could please read the two items to be suggested to be added, and we'll move forward. Go ahead.
We have the one is the call to order, two is review of the agenda, three mayor and council event announcements, four closed session summary readings, five public comments, six vote on the consulting firm to assist us with ARPA funding, seven appointment to arts commission, eight presentation building application review for thirty-seven hundred thirty-fifth street, nine vote on amending the FY twenty-two budget to reflect the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, new business under ten charter amendment, discussion of vacancies in office, eleven base discussion about the vice mayor rotation, twelve reassignment of committees, and thirteen adjournment.
Thank you, Luke. Melissa, can you please read the two items? You must have them a little more available than I do when it comes to the two items for the design review board that were suggested to be added, please?
Is discussed and votes on variance for addresses forty-eleven thirty-first street and forty-twenty-two thirty-seventh streets? The mayor and the council will discuss and vote on the variance.
Okay, so those are recommendations that have been put forward by the design review board. They did ask if we could submit them. Alma is here, in case you guys have any questions. I'm not sure if somebody from the board is, but usually the way it works, they make a recommendation, we vote it up or down, most of the time up, and the next day our trustee clerk submits the letters out, so that way the board knows, the board variance knows that it has been reviewed by our committee, and at the same time it has been voted to move forward by us. So I'm asking for both items to be added to the agenda for tonight.
I move that we add the two agenda items discussed to be the new agenda items, six and seven, and then push everything else down one.
Can we make numbers? You want us to do it separately, Luke, or do you want to just put numbers?
Together, yeah. Or yeah, sorry. Motion that it make it a new number six on the agenda, so we can get those people out of here.
So can we also move number eight, because it's basically the same thing? Luke, you went green on my screen.
Sorry. Oh, yeah. Oh, so we could wait. So is eight? So now I have a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna
It's three of them, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recede my motion. So is, I'm confused. Is number eight one of the addresses that we're discussing?
No, it's an extra one. So we will be reviewing three of them today.
Oh, okay. Well, then we just need to amend the, just the number eight, yeah, that would work, and just add those addresses. Mr. Kamali, I see your hand, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yes, I just want to say hello to everybody, and I want to make sure that I have Tom, Mr. Tom here to present and give you a little introduction about the firm and their firm and their service. So I do appreciate if we could let him go as soon as possible, too.
Okay, so then it would just make sense to amend eight, to include those two addresses, and then we don't have to move around the agenda. So I motion to amend item number eight to discuss and vote on building application revisions to add the addresses that Selena just referenced.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor. Can somebody second it, please?
Second it, second it.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing that, there's none, I will be adding both addresses number eight. Melissa, can you please add them? Thank you. Thank you so much, Melissa.
And while Melissa's doing that
Luke, your mic cut off. I don't know if it's me or you.
Sorry. While Melissa's making that change, I will motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there any second? Council, will anybody second the motion?
I did second.
Thank you, Jimmy. So any objections? Any notes? So motion carries, four zero zero. Okay, so we have an agenda. All right.
We introduce Melissa, mayor, by the way.
Yes, I apologize, Melissa. You were here last meeting, but not in your official full role as clerk. So City of Mount Rainier, please let me introduce you guys, Ms. Melissa, who is our new city clerk. Melissa, you have a few words to say to the city now that you're officially in this capacity?
I'm just happy to be here, and I'm here to serve the council and the city, the members of the county, the city, sorry. And you can just call on me at any time. I'm available, ready to help.
What is your email, Melissa? Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, and welcome to your first official meeting on this side. Melissa actually joined us in the last meeting, so my apologies, I forgot it. It was as a viewer last time that you were here. But thank you for being here, okay? All right, so mayor and council, we're moving on to announcements and events. And we will start with word two. Jared, Jimmy, and Luke, in that order. Go ahead.
Uh, no, no immediate announcements, thank you.
Okay, Jimmy and Luke?
I don't have any.
Okay, Luke?
I'm sure Selena will talk about her events for this Saturday. Selena's having meetings around town. I'll let her talk about it, but I'll say her meeting with me is at three o'clock, and it's probably the most important one to attend, because she wants to meet with Jimmy and Jared. I'm joking. I don't know where we're meeting yet, though, so I'm anxious to hear mayor tell us where we're meeting at three o'clock. But the only other announcements I have, I have two other announcements. The first one is the native plant network is going to be sending out some communications. So Mr. Kamali, be on the lookout for communications coming from me for the city to send out. I will also be sending out communications to residents on Facebook and through email blast. If you would like to have your yard certified as being part of the native plant network, that means that at least twenty-five percent, or sorry, ten percent of your yard is dedicated to native planting. We can go and have somebody check out your yard to confirm that. You can be part of the network. If you do, and you're one of the first twenty-five people to be certified, you will get a free native plant bush, courtesy of Chesapeake natives, courtesy of a grant we received from the Endangered Species Coalition. And if you are one of those twenty-five people, we are gonna get a sign that's being designed by local artist Tori Partridge that we'll put in your front yard. It'll be a small sign, sort of like what you see that the National Wildlife Foundation has, or even what your security sign might be in your front yard. So a pretty designed sign showing that you're a part of the native plant network. And then if you volunteer, we'll put your house on a Google map, identifying your house as being part of this broader Google map that we're developing, showing where homes are planting native, not just in Mount Rainier, but in the larger DMV area, because, and this leads to my second announcement, my work with the Sierra Club, we have another meeting at the end of the month. It is October twenty-eighth at eight P M. Email me if you want to join. That Sierra Club's work is taking what we're doing here in Mount Rainier, and it's trying to expand it out to create a native plant and wildlife corridor across the state. So the map that we're joining, that we're creating here in Mount Rainier, is actually starting to grow, and you're starting to see where there are corridors across the state. And Tacoma Park is starting to come on board, and some homes in Tacoma Park are actually now being identified on this map that we're building. So it's kind of a neat thing, so just be on the lookout for communications on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. It definitely sounds like a lot of exciting work and lines up with our green vision, green infrastructure. Thank you for taking lead on that, and also working to lead in other cities as well, so that's appreciated. So I'll give you guys a quick rundown. If you guys have noticed, the new item on the agenda is events. Melissa, can you move up the agenda? So I'll start with some of them. So with events, we are, let me do that one last. Indigenous Peoples' Day will be October eleventh. City Hall will be closed that day, so please mark your calendars. The zombie walk is October sixteen. Both Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementary are participating, and if you want to contribute to education, it's a good way for you to donate and exercise and workout. Halloween events, we're working on them to select some days and try to do a COVID safe, so that that's coming around. Tomorrow, we're asking all of City of Mount Rainier, just like every day, tomorrow be extra cautious as you're driving through the city, because it's Walk to School Day. Both our schools are participating, so you'll have a lot of parents biking or walking to school. They usually get a high percentage of students that do that, so be extra cautious on your way to work in the morning. Usually the kids are, could be there as early as seven-twenty. The entry bell is at, they have to be before seven-forty. So more or less between seven and seven-forty, be extra careful driving through our streets more than usual, because you will have a good amount of parents and kids, kids walking. The other item on the agenda is the mayor's conversation, where I'm gonna join with the various council members. Council member Charlo alerted me that there's over fifty percent rain chances on Saturday, so we will have to take that into account in case we need to modify the meeting or change it to a different day, because they definitely don't want us to get rained in. We're trying to avoid getting sick at all costs, right? So I have talked to the council members. We are trying to change one of the locations, because it's too close, and if it starts raining in the afternoon, we might have to consolidate one of the locations and then move the other one, Luke, the later one with you. I know Jared and Jimmy are relatively close, so, you know, so we were even thinking about maybe even keeping them together, and that's gonna be, Jimmy, do you know the exact location where your meeting is gonna take place?
We talked about Upshore and Thirty-Second Street.
Yeah, so that's where I started with Jared. We talked about the park across the food forest, right? But they're relatively close, so we might have to adjust them, but it's also gonna depend. So as it gets closer to the, to Saturday, we'll be able to either let you know where the times are gonna be changed, but either way, we're gonna make flyers and knock around the doors to make sure you're aware that we're coming to your block. So Luke, I know we're very close to your, to your side of the woods, so I was thinking maybe the south side might be a good alternative for us, so that way we could start splitting the city into various location, okay?
Yep, wherever you want me to be, I'll be there.
Perfect. And so we'll be sending the announcement. I'll send an email to all of you guys, so that we're identified the locations, create the flyer, and it should be out tomorrow before the end of the day, okay? So that's the exciting part. The other thing is like, I was very, very proud to say that this Friday, Casa in Action held a vigil in Annapolis. Both Jimmy and myself were there, along with other five residents of the City of Mount Rainier, you know, talking about like moratoriums for the evictions, because of October first, you know, the rent is there. That we also all had a sleep out in Annapolis, so it was a very good bonding experience, and also like, at least for me, it feels like it keeps me in contact with the community, but also keeps me grounded of the things that are happening and the different things that we face. So that was a part of our weekend. Councilmember Stolfes and I, and pardon Jimmy, showed up yesterday for the groundbreaking for the playground. Chesapeake Bay Trust gave Mount Rainier Elementary some funding in order to move some of the asphalt in front of the school, so they had that groundbreaking ceremony yesterday midday. So we joined, along with board member Pamela Busta Strutter, Principal Teal, Vice Principal Collin. We were there, and obviously the PTO and a couple teachers and a few kids. So that's moving forward when it comes to the work. I think I talked about both conjoining, like I mentioned earlier when the meeting opened. Luke and I were both at the Mount Rainier PTO meeting, talking about ARPA and letting them, beautiful presentation, Luke. Now we, next stop is Thomas Stone Elementary, to talk to them about the ARPA funds, what's the plan, what's the work on it, so that we continue to, you know, informing the community. So we're gonna make sure we put a whole entire information doc that also shows in what way we have also done outreach to the PTOs, to the businesses, to the community as a whole, so thank you for that. So that is a few of my events, and we're looking forward to having a great, a great and happy October. You do have council members that are highly involved, so you will see them running around everywhere in the city, okay? So those are the upcoming events and announcement in my behalf, all right? So can you move the agenda up?
Mayor, do you want to mention the new stop signs, by the way?
Oh, yes. How can I forget this? So back in, back when I was running, back, it feels like many blue moons ago, right? So there was always been a concern when it comes on thirty-four and two specific stops close to Thomas Stone, because people were turning, and there was no stop sign, and there was upcoming traffic, right? So the City of Mount Rainier, back in May, Mr. Kamali might be able to fill us in a little more, was able to put not just two stop signs that were added on thirty-four, but also at the same time put signs that said upcoming traffic didn't stop. I did communicate it with Brentwood, the mayor, Mayor Rosio Tramia Lopez, and I said to her like, we would like, you know, to, for your, for you and your council to look into putting stop signs on your side of the street of Brentwood, because there is some coming traffic in order to create the street safe. She said, we'll work on it, and, you know, they had elections as well, so their council met in September, they got stuff together, and as of this Friday, we actually have two stop signs now also on the other side. And Mr. Kamali, can you let us know what the streets are, where the stop signs are?
Yeah, they are located on Thirty-Fourth Street, Upshore and Varma, on Thirty-Fourth.
So now it's a three-way stop right there, creating it a little bit more safer for our students and our residents to walk through there. So it's a small sample how collaborating between the community in both cities, we could definitely continue to create a safe pathway for the residents. So thank you, Jimmy, for that. Definitely was exciting, you know, so we're very happy.
One, one more question. Mayor, is that a full quorum here?
We have full quorum. Three members will create full quorum automatically, so we have four. Jimmy, does that answer your question?
Exactly, but.
Do you want, I will, I will address it.
Are you gonna address it at a different time? I just don't know what you're gonna
No, to be honest with you, I was gonna, I don't think it was a spot on it. I think once we talk about the vice mayor rotation, we were gonna address it, but
Okay, okay.
Councilmember, I'll say it. Councilmember Scott Cecil has resigned effectively October first from his post. So saying that, the way the chart is right now, because I've been getting a lot of emails and questions about this, just like it happened when I became mayor, or when Tracy left, I mean Ivy left, when it's been it's, it's, I know. Go find Zachary, so you could show him up and show, so the council? Okay, sorry. My daughter's trying to find the cats, so she could show them in the pet shop presentation. And if anybody has cats, they know they, they have their own mind, so the cats are like hiding everywhere. They don't want to be in the show.
I need snacks.
Okay, go, go get snacks. Go get snacks. Go. Okay, so the council member that is, in that war, in this case, councilmember Stolfes gets to bring up to three names to council, or for council to vote on who will take, who'll be appointed for the ward to seat. Same procedure as we had when I left, when I went from council member to mayor after the elections, right? So if anybody's interested, you know, councilmember Stolfes emails, send emails his way, or talk to him, or you could always ask us about the procedure. But usually we do our best to respect what the council member in the ward runs, is able to do, okay? So Jimmy, anything else I need to add for right now, as we stand right now?
You're fine. Sorry, mayor.
No, no, thank you for reminding me. I thought I was gonna address it for me, but that's fine. So that is it. So any questions, you could address them to us, and, but that's, but that's my favorite cat only at calls whenever I call him, right? My favorite child, according to, my favorite cat child. So, sorry. So saying that, that's the reason why we don't, we, this is what quorum is gonna look like until that new person is seated. Quorum according to its majority, so where there is five positions, there's three of them, three people present will create a quorum in a five, in a five-seat council, mayor and council. Correct? Jared, Luke, anything I'm missing? Maybe not. Did you see shakings? Okay, all right. So we'll continue talking about the rotation. I added it to the agenda, because we do need to have a vice mayor, and I said, I submitted two suggestions to you guys, and I'm open to whichever, whatever you guys would like to choose, okay? All right. Thank you for the announcements, events, and for the great work you guys are doing as well. All right, so we have summary of closed, of closed sessions. Currently, we only have one, Melissa, which is the summary we currently have, and I'll go ahead and, and we'll go ahead and read it. Melissa?
September eighth?
We have September eighth. We'll be working on the other two, and we will be submitting them in the next work session to be read, okay? Unfortunately, they, they were not completed, so I managed to work with Melissa to complete this one, but we'll be right on track. So closed session summary for September eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the start of the meeting was seven forty-five, it ended at eight forty-four. It was a virtual WebEx meeting. We made, according to three dash three oh five B We uh made um according to three dash three oh five B, uh parentheses, one, seven, and eight. And that's basically to discuss employment and to get legal advice and consultation from legal. Those are the three who made the motion. That was Luke, second by uh Scott. Um, attended um members, official members present, uh Mayor Benitez, council member Jimmy Tarlo, Jerestofes, Casizo, and Luccheseck. So it's a full quorum. And we see those others in attendance were the city lawyers. And we did, we did take a vote and the vote uh was five zero zero. And it was to waive attorney client privilege to the extent necessary as determined by city attorneys, attorneys for Lisa Levant to testify the upcoming hearing on September twenty-first and twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Like I say, it was unanimous voted. Topic of discussion was ongoing legislation. And that is a fair summary for September eighth meeting. Council, anything to add? Did I miss anything? No? Okay, so Melissa will make a note of the two other ones that we need to read and we'll get right on it. I've also uh sent email to you guys to see who would like to help on that task. And if anybody else wants to take it to help, you're, you're more than welcome to also help. All right, so now moving on to item number five, uh that'll be public comment. Uh, members of the public, please make sure you, you state your name and last name, also um, street number. Um, and you have three minutes to speak. Uh, if you are speaking on behalf of a group, uh, you have five minutes and then the other members of the group um, do not get a chance to speak, give you, they giving you your time to speak. Okay, uh Melissa, do we have anybody in the chat or on Facebook um that has asked to speak?
Oh.
Okay. I neither, all right. Seeing that there is um no members of the public to speak both on Facebook or in the chat, I would like to move on to the next item. Uh, that will be item number six, vote on consulting firm assisting with ARPA funds. Uh, that's ten minutes allocated. The mayor and council will discuss and vote to approve the recommendations by the city manager to um use or hire, in this case, uh Thomas Michael LLC firm for ARPA funds and services. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right, Mayor, uh, as I recommended uh in my email to mayor and council, that we have received three different proposals from, you know, three different consultants. And my uh recommendation to mayor and council is to use Thomas and Michael LLC because the way I see it, we will, they really have a good team and they can help us with overseeing the ARPA funds and they ex- expending the money and make sure that we stay in compliant with, with the Treasury Department and make sure that we do the reporting on time. So I would like mayor and council to allow me to use Michael and Thomas. And I have Mr. Tom here to present an introduction about their firm and their team to the mayor and council.
All right, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is uh Thomas Himmler. I'm the managing member of Thomas Michael LLC. Uh, it's a, a privilege to be here uh this evening and appreciate you giving us this a couple of minutes because we, we know you have a very uh busy agenda. We did send a uh PowerPoint that hopefully you have to kind of, that we're gonna walk through pretty quickly. Um, I don't know if the clerk is gonna share a screen with it or, or you just have it in, in a hard copy. So hopefully you have a copy of it in your, either virtual copy or hard copy. Um, okay, uh, just real quick, a little bit about our firm, if you get a slide three and your, your, your version of it. Yeah, our firm is really premise on, we wanna be creative, but we also wanna be innovative with all of our clients, you know? People can be creative in coming up with things and thinking of things, but we wanna be innovative in helping you do things. And that's really the overarching premise of, of our firm. Where I should say, we're a Prince George's County based firm. Uh, we're located in Greenbelt, Maryland. Uh, going to the next slide, slide four, just our approach. You know, we wanna help the public sector and private sector make right decisions. And our hope goal is, our philosophy is, we wanna help uh the, both private sector and public sector transform communities and, and and that's really what we're focused on and, and the various services that we provide. Uh, that's, that's our goal. We wanna help communities grow, thrive, and, and in this case, we're gonna talk a little bit about at the end, help you to restore, uh in particular, and transform and recover from the pandemic. Uh, slide five, just a little bit about our, our experience. Our team brings thirty-plus years of experience in both the public sector and private sector. In particular, over that thirty years, about eighteen of it has been at senior executive levels in both the uh state and local government and also the private sector. So we have a, a, a very well experienced team that, that, that's tackled a lot of different issues over the years. And uh you see here at the bottom of that slide, a, a number of different areas we, we, we have expertise in, I'm not gonna list them all, but it's, it's a pretty wide uh swath of, of, of expertise that we bring. Um, in particular, we focus on three primary services. We, we help people, we help local governments in, in dealing with budgetary and fiscal matters, I, like we're talking about tonight with the ARPA funds. Uh, a whole wide range of, of, of experiences and services we provide there. We also have extensive experience in public policies and procedures, and that's really important on the next slide, as you see in slide seven. As you start thinking about program development with guidelines, applications, those things, as Mr. Kamali said, everything with ARPA is, you know, making sure it's eligible use and, and we're complying with all the, the litany of treasury requirements. And then lastly, on slide eight, uh, we have an extensive amount of economic development opportunity, uh, experience. Uh, we, we've, we've worked on, or our team has worked on in the, just the past decade alone, uh, over sixteen billion dollars of public and private, you know, uh, infrastructure and projects. So we, we, we have a lot of experience there. Moving to slide ten, really to show you our experience in dealing with uh federal COVID nineteen monies. Since March of twenty, when, when, when the pandemic started and the federal government started providing federal funding, uh, we have helped and are continuing to help uh various local governments in particular who have received over four hundred and forty million dollars of federal funds from CARES Act, from the Consolidated Appropriations Act, which most people recall as the December twenty twenty stimulus. And then also the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we, we, and as part of those advisory services, we do a variety of different things, including assisting in the development spending plans, assisting with compliance and reporting. Uh, as I mentioned, we help.
Yes, excuse me, Tom, uh, I don't think any of us have seen the slides. I'm not, and I, which has been, so anyway.
Yeah, I'm seeing a word document. Oh, I was looking at the wrong thing then.
Can you guys share um the screen with them maybe?
Tom, he's gonna share the screen with us, please.
Okay, I, I, okay, I couldn't do that. I didn't, I didn't realize.
Please, yeah, that was an assumption.
Sorry about that.
Okay, sorry.
One of our residents.
Yes.
Can you guys all see them right now?
We can see it.
I can see it.
There you go.
Okay, that's great.
Better?
Can you see that?
Now go to number eight.
Sorry about that. So, so um, this is just talking about, about our experience. So for four hundred and forty million dollars of federal COVID nineteen funds that we've been advising on since March of twenty twenty, um, from the three major federal stimulus uh bills. Uh, our services, you see a whole list up in here, but a couple of important ones is we help with the development of spending plans, help communities figure out how they should go about uh making those investments uh to, to really help their communities of, you know, recover, restore, and transform uh out of COVID. Uh, we help develop program applications and guidelines for, for programs that you wanna launch. Uh, we do a lot because of, of guidance with treasury, because treasury is, is always updating things as they go. And as you may have heard, you know, just late last week, they, they, they moved the first reporting date. They, they, which was due October thirtieth, not a first reporting dates, not until April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two for any, for non entitlement units like the city. Uh, so there's a lot of things that's always going on with, with treasury and, and trying to keep abreast of those things. And also too, we wanna help make sure that once you have a plan set up, that you're successfully implementing it. So we'll participate in that process to make sure, helping you keep it moving so that you're achieving the goals that you wanted. And also help you set up, uh, depending upon which uh categories and programs you come up with, there's gonna be selective uh data that you're gonna have to keep track of and report of. So we're gonna assist you with that as, as, as well among, among the other things you see on here. So again, we have a lot of, a lot, a lot of experience in dealing with this over the last eighteen, nineteen months uh for various sizes of clients and, and we're continuing to add clients as well. Um, as, as more and more of the cities and towns in particular start focusing on the ARPA funds. So this, and, and in closing, this really touches on, we wanna help you recover, restore, and transform with these funds. We don't just want you to, to spend them. We wanna help you uh make investments and, and do things that will help really the city be transformed and, and tackle some issues that you may not have been able to, to tackle before. While the treasury funds are pretty restrictive, uh, we're gonna work with Mr. Kamali to see if we can find some ways where we can uh, uh, attach to some more flexible uses, in particular with the revenue loss calculation. If we can uh help identify a revenue loss as treasury determines it, there's a little bit, there's a good bit more flexibility in use of funds uh for those as well. And then also too, part of the city is in a, is what the treasury is calling a disproportionate impacted area. So uh HUD has qualified census tracts and part of the city's limits in particular on the northern and um have, are in one, and, and some of those qualified census tracts which allow you to do some more things as well. So again, we have very, a lot of tremendous amount of experience. We just wanna be partners with you all and we just appreciate your, your consideration and the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you so much, council members. I'm gonna open the floor first to um you guys if you have any questions. Uh, we will start with Jimmy, uh Luke, and followed by Jared. Go ahead, Jimmy.
So uh, I also wanna mention that uh, uh, Tom knows our city. Uh, he was the chief financial off, uh, chief financial officer, but he was the numbers project for the county. And we were involved with him a lot about figuring out whether, how to finance the uh, one of the projects that were going on the thirty-two-hundred mark of Rhode Island Avenue. And I was kind of, I'm excited to have him. I was excited that he's really focused on those kinds of uh, lots of the bulbs. Some of the other uh, uh uh proposals were groups that were like mainly lobbyists and did lots of other things. And I said, uh, uh, Tom and Thomas Michaels, Michael's his middle name, by the way. Uh, I'm excited to have him. Uh, one question I had uh that came up in the uh Mount Rainier uh elementary school meeting is a question of duplicate, duplicate of uh, things that we don't wanna duplicate. So the, so I don't know if you will be able to help us on that certain proposals. We don't wanna do something if the county is gonna have the same money or the feds are gonna come up with infrastructure and whether you'd be able to give us some, some like kind of uh, you know, orange light, say, hey, you guys may not wanna do this because the county is doing the same thing. Is that something you can help us on?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Tarlo. Definitely on the, on the, on the, on the piece, because one of our clients is Prince George's County. And I actually, one of the things we've been encouraging all of our different clients, especially those in Prince George's, um, is the, is to write, at least at this point, not to actively try to pursue like rental assistance and, and, and utility assistance. Uh, because the, the county's in the process, one, the county has had received eighty-four, eighty-five million dollars from various sources. And they're in the process now and we're working with them to get additional monies from the state of Maryland. Um, and then on top of that, uh, US Treasury just came out with guidance uh yesterday about how they're gonna reallocate emergency rental assistance funds within states primarily to start with of, from entities who are not spending their money, rental assistance money, to others who are having more success and have a need. And Prince George's has been the leader actually in spending rental assistance money by far in Maryland and one of the leaders in the country. And so they're gonna be able to uh most likely benefit from that reallocation process. So as of now, uh, we would, we're encouraging clients to, to stay away from that. And if you do have people who need rental assistance, that, to point them towards the county's, you know, application process, and they have a pretty robust one. And I was just talking to the director of the county's Department of Housing and Community Development today. And they're in the process of hiring additional staff to help with this additional expected influx of money that will come from the state.
So if we give you a list of proposals, I know uh we've had a wishlist, you'll be able to kind of say, you know, this is something that may, may have to duplicate, this is something.
Yes, for sure, for sure.
Thank you, Luke. Go ahead.
Um, no, I don't have too many questions. I don't have any questions, I don't think. Um, I just really appreciate you, Thomas, coming out here and taking time on a weeknight to present to us, uh, make sure residents have a chance to hear from you. Um, I like Mr. Kamali's recommendation to bring you on board. I really liked everything in the letter that you sent us. You went down into the weeds on some things that other people really didn't go down in the weeds on, and I was like, oh, this guy knows what he's talking about. Um, and it sounds like you do tonight, and we just appreciate you um coming on board and helping the city. This is a really once in a generation opportunity. Um, you know, it's, 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 it, it's, it's not really highlighting the fact well by saying this is just seventy-five percent of our budget, because most of our budget just goes to staff. So having this much money to spend on projects is really, I don't know that this will ever happen again. And I know folks are thinking about infrastructure spending and the reconciliation bill. Um, but a lot of that might just up buckets that the federal government already has out there for folks that you have to apply for and get. It's not like they're gonna just send you a check in your bank account like what's, what's happening right now. And so um, it's very important to me that we do the best things possible um, um, for folks in the city of Mount Rainier. I just feel a huge obligation to do right by residents with this opportunity. And um, I appreciate you understanding the weight of that and helping make sure that, you know, we dot all our I's, cross all our R's, and are doing the best things for folks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your support.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, Jared?
And I just, uh, I don't wanna repeat everything Jimmy and Luke said, but just, um, yeah, we're gonna bring forward some things for you, for you. Um, just echo what Luke said on having your uh support and expertise. I've um been both a federal grantee and a grantor, sorry. And then I've also been a grantee, a couple of local government, like federal compliance is not simple. Um, there's a lot of, a lot, a lot of compliance responsibilities, uh, and a lot of them are unusual for a city of our size. Um, but they don't go away with this fund. So I appreciate the opportunity you've, um, I appreciate you coming on to help support us. I know this is really important for us for the stewardship, and not only these funds, but for us in the future, uh, if we compete for additional funds, whether it's regular appropriations, infrastructure bill, um, reconciliation funds, we're gonna need to demonstrate that we handled um and managed these funds effectively uh and accurately and in compliant, full compliance. So um, this is, you know, important for the funds we have. It's also important for things in the future, and I appreciate your attention to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, at least for me, I will tell you, uh, thank you for putting this document together. We had very good candidates. Um, I, at least I know one of that's very invested in the city as well. Um, so this is the recommendation from the city manager, and I usually try to respect the recommendation. I will say to you though, that when it comes to the housing and funding, we do need to put money aside as a city. Mainly because unfortunately the county might have a lot of money, but they're having a lot of problem with readers. And um, that's where a lot of um, us elected officials have had to get involved because um the money might be there, but it's not getting to all the people that need it, especially in the, in some of our communities. So um, at least for console, definitely wanna make sure that we get to the very weeds of it to make sure we're not just as mystic because somebody else is doing it. But there's actually some um help that our municipality, you know, that our residents, whether it's school or, or uh community members um need that you, we're gonna have to work. whether it's school or, or community members need, that we're going to have to work with the county. But definitely like, you know, thank you for letting us know that they're hiring more people, because last time I heard is like they were working and also figuring out a way to hire two people, two groups. One of them was CASA and the other one was HIP, to be readers, because they're so behind right now in like leasing funds. So that definitely has become a big concern, because eviction is a real thing. But thank you for being here. I, I know you're going to, the document they said you're going to be assisting the city, council members and city manager. I did send you guys an email right now regarding an extra position that was posted in High School as well, that might be needed in the city as well to have in our, in a program manager to be able to work with Michael and Thomas, to make sure they carry like the extra heavy work on our end, because it's going to be a lot. And the reality is, is like, you know, our team has a lot of work they're doing, and this is going to be even more work that's been added. Want to make sure that we do not skip on that. The other thing to clarify for the community, the consultant, consultants, because we're so useful for water storm management, they come out of the ARPA funds. So this is money that is invested into the funds itself, correct, Mr. Kamali?
Yeah.
So once we decide to go whichever route or amount we do water storm, the consultant and the people that are going to be working is going to be funds that are going to be taken out. So if anybody, so I'm going to open up to the community, okay? Do we have anyone? He's only charging a month and the answer is ARPA pays for it, yes. The ARPA pays for it. So do we have anybody else in the chat on Facebook that has a question, Melissa? Okay. I know where in City Hall you are now, I just realized, I saw somebody else there. Okay, all right. Thank you, Melissa. We, we had a comment from, hold on, Jimmy, we did have a comment from former councilman Brian Neller that said he wasn't seeing the slide, and then he was able to see them. Jimmy also commented their, the amount they're charging, $2,500 a month, and the answer is that the ARPA pays for it. Okay, so Jimmy, you were going to put a motion on the floor?
That's correct. I was going to make a motion that we, that we approve Mr. Kamali's recommendation to hire Thomas and Michael LLC. Am I correct, $2,500 a month?
Yes.
For, for one year, is that, is that, is there a time limit on this, Mr. Kamali?
No, there is no time limit and Tom can, could you please weigh in and let them know what we are.
So the, so the, the.
As far as what we're going to approve.
Yeah, the first version, the first one is essentially run from 12 months from the time of contract, with both parties have the ability to extend under the same terms and conditions, but it's $2,500 a month.
I approve that we hire Mr. Thomas Michael appropriate $30,000 out of the ARPA funds for one year contract.
Second?
Hold, hold on. So there's been motion, been first and second. I do have a question for you guys. So by hiring him for one year exactly, that means that in a year we will reconvene to figure out if the contract is going to be extended or not? Jimmy, is that correct? I would just want to make sure that's clear.
I think, I think we can automatically extend it once we do that through our budget, budget process.
Well, if the resolution stays 12 months, it's 12 months. Luke, go ahead.
Just put it in the budget as a line item and then, you know, we don't have to deal with it.
So if the resolution stays for 12 months, he'll be hired just for 12 months? So you could put the money in the budget? That doesn't mean he'll be the person carrying through, it would just mean that there are money there for a consultant.
Hey, let me then change it. We would hire Mr. Thomas Michael for $2,500 a month, and we would review whether to continue after 12 months.
Okay. Luke, there's been an amendment to the motion, do you accept?
I accept with a, with an amendment, with the option to extend the contract for additional 12 months.
So that, that was, Melissa, you got it down? And Jimmy and Luke, you're on the same page when it comes to the new motion, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor to hire Thomas and Michaels for 12 months with the, with, with the inclusion to extend, right? Jimmy?
Yes.
Luke? Okay. So you heard the motion that's on the floor. I will do a roll call, a quick one. Any objections?
Sorry, real quick, the motion to, not an objection, but the motion to, I mean, sorry, the motion, the, the option to extend it is what? On, on a month-to-month basis or?
His motion was for another year.
Okay, all right. All right, that's that, thanks for the clarification. Yes.
Have I told you guys how much Webex hates me? Kick me out. Okay, I'm back. So it was the motion on the floor. Any, any objections? Any yess?
Yes.
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 So the motion carries for 00. Thank you so, Mr. Kamali, you have your vote, and you could start working with Michael and Thomas and get all the property documentation and documents that you need to. Anything else you need from us in this point, Mr. Kamali?
No, thank you, mayor and council, and thank you, Tom, for giving us some time tonight and presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali and mayor and council, look forward to working with you and our firm.
Thank you, Thomas, for coming, we appreciate it, okay? We'll be working very closely.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Yeah. Melissa, can, let me change my setting, because now I'm in my phone. Okay. All right, moving on to item number seven, appointment of the Art Commission. Mayor and council will discuss and vote on the appointment of Michael Fila, Tori Partridge to the Arts Commission, as well as the reappointment of Alex Kozak, who is current, the current Chair of the Arts Commission, to serve for the next two years. Luke, you have the floor?
Thank you, mayor. I'll start off by saying that the Arts Commission has been in existence for two years now. So they've done two projects, the mural on Penny Real Station, and then the mural on the brick building on 34th Street that has the laundromat there. And I forget the business that's right there where the, it's got the thrift store, and then, I don't know if it's the thrift store that has mics that has the mural there, but that was their second project. So they are anxious to get started on year three and figure out where they can do a third project. It's a lot of work that goes into the Arts Commission. They have to, they sort of go around town and they look at a location in one of our business districts, so Rhode Island Avenue, 34th Street or Varnum. And they try to see where would, where there would be a good spot for an art mural. And, you know, that's not all. Then you have to negotiate with the person who owns the building to try to get them on board to agree. And they've had a lot of good lessons learned from that, so they work, where they interface with our city attorney, city manager, and then either the business owner or the business owner's attorney to get an agreement there. And then they do a national call out for artists. Last year they did a local call out, the first year it was national in scope, and, and there's, there's different ways you can do that. And then they whittle down applicants, and they get quite a few of applications. So there's a lot of work that goes into whittling down from 100 applicants down to three, that they present then to the mayor and council with a recommendation for one. The last two years we've approved their recommendations, so we rely heavily on their expertise. I'll talk about Alex first. He, I think it's really important to reappoint Alex, because he is the only one that's now left over from the first year crew, and a lot of lessons were learned there. And I think it would be really sad if we didn't have those lessons that institution allowed knowledge carry over. And then, so I, I think it's important that he get, gets reappointed for a two-year term. And then we have two new appointees. We have Michael and Tori. Michael and Tori, both their resumes went to the Arts Commission to see if they had any concerns, and the Arts Commission supports their recommendations. I know Tori has done artwork with the city, she's partnered with the city on the Community Food Forest, and is partnering with the city on the Native Plant Network, so she's very familiar with the city, with people here, and, and our commitment to the artists. And I can't speak too much for Michael, I apologize, I don't know you as well, but everything I read just looks like you'll be a great addition to the Arts Commission, and the Commission itself supports both of these nominations. There are still vacancies on the Arts Commission for anyone else in the community who would like to apply. I think they can have up to seven slots, so if anybody else is interested, you can, you can still get your applications in. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Michael, I'll go, I'll go to.
Hold on one second. Just to add, there was a call out in behalf of the city in various meetings for members of the community to join the Art Commission, and both Michael and Tori applied, and then their recommendation moved forward to the Art Commission to see, you know, to get their feedback. I want to make sure that people know that, and they're, you could go to the website to apply for the other positions as well. And Luke, are all three of them here?
Alex is not here, but I think folks should know Alex from prior years. We have Mike and Tori are both here, so I want to give them a couple minutes to kind of introduce themselves, and I'm just going to go left to right that I, where I see them. So if we want to start with Mike.
Michael, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thanks, Luke, and thank you, Selena. My name is Mike Fila. I am a relatively new resident of Mount Rainier, but I feel like I'm wearing that out pretty quickly now. I've been working in the arts for 15 years, 10 of which have been spent in arts administration. My background is varied, I've worked for contemporary art museums, theaters, multidisciplinary art centers, it really runs the gamut. And that has just like deepened my love and greater appreciation of a variety of different art forms, and I am looking forward to bringing that to the Commission, and eager to volunteer for the city. My partner and I moved here in 2019. We've met some really amazing people here, we feel very embraced by our block. Former Commission member Joe Hicks is a neighbor of ours, so he's talked with me extensively about the work of the volunteers on the council. So I do feel somewhat familiar with it and was able to sit in on a recent meeting. So I'm excited to get involved and start working for the benefit of Mount Rainier. We love it here and we want to continue to see it improve and get better and flourish.
Thank you, Michael. Tori?
Hi, guys, how are you? If you don't know me already, my name is Tori Partridge. I am the owner of a company called Territory, formerly known as Cherry Blossom Creative. And if you have seen an illustrated map of Mount Rainier, that is a thing that I make. And I'm a, also similar to Mike, I'm a relatively new resident, I've been here for just over two years now. I'm on the south side with Mike and Selena. And the only thing that I love more than art in the world is community, and especially neighborhood community. And that's one of the reasons that we chose to move to Mount Rainier and to be surrounded by, by artists and by creative people. And so it seemed like a wonderful opportunity to help bring my project management skills and my consensus building skills and some of the things that it takes to run a small business to help pull that into service of bringing more public art into town and being able to make connections happen, pull like talent from our community, pull talent into our community. And I'm just thrilled to be able to, to help make that happen, so. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. And Tori also created beautiful pages for the community to color, so we're very happy to have that of various houses around the community, that was very exciting. And Mike is definitely also a great neighbor, has done beautiful things with, with his house as well. It is a whole place of art as well from, from both the outside as well. Okay, so council, you have heard both, all three recommendations, Tori, Mike and Alex. Can I have, do you guys have any questions for them? And I will start this time with Jared's office. Council member?
No, just wanted to thank, thank all of you for stepping up. I, you know, volunteering, volunteering is, you know, is time, it's time out of your schedules. I really appreciate that you're all taking the opportunity to give back to the community and get more involved. And I'm, you know, always, always blown away by the expertise and experience and capabilities that people bring to this town, especially creative folks. That is, I enjoy being surrounded by you, I have nothing to contribute in that, that, that aspect. So thank you again for stepping up, that's all I have, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared, followed by Jimmy, and then Luke.
Just thank you.
Okay, Luke, anything to add?
Nothing to add. And just, mayor, if you think it's wise to make a motion to appoint these three, I can, I can do that.
If you give me at least one minute?
Yep.
I would like to say something, but I'd be very happy for you to make the motion. So Tori and Mike and Alex, thank you for stepping up. We look forward, if you guys have seen, you know, I think some of the contradictions we always had, it's like Mount Rainier is like the hub of the arts, and we are. And having the Art Commission work together and also the various artists in the city to, you know, emphasize who we are as the city has been beautiful to see. And it definitely changed what their buildings look like, they've become more welcome and inviting. So you have a huge responsibility on your shoulders, but at the same time, I know you will rise to the occasion, and we look forward to the upcoming recommendations you will have on, on your path of work towards the new public art that we will put together. And Luke, this is also a big thank you to you for your efforts on this, on this front. I want to make sure that this thing goes unnamed, you have definitely made sure that committee was created, that is funded, and collaborate and work together. So I want to make sure, you, you're very humble in many ways, but I want to make sure that you're recognized for your work, because you've been very a staple in the, in the Arts Commission as well, okay? So mayor and council members, I'll entertain a motion on the floor, and I know my, Luke is eager to make one. Go ahead, Luke.
I'll move that we appoint Michael Fila, Tori Partridge, and Alex Kozin to the Arts Commission.
I'll go ahead, any seconds?
Seconded.
Can I only make the only observation to utilize reappointment of Alex, please?
Oh, yep, I'll amend my motion that it's the reappointment of Alex and the appointment of Tori and Mike.
Okay, Jared, do you take that recommendation?
I will second that, yeah, thank you for, thank you for clarification there.
Perfect. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, has, has been, there's a motion has been second. Any yess?
Yes.
Go on. Two?
Yes.
Three, and Mike makes it four. Well, there's only, obviously no objections and no abstentions. So the motion carries for 00. My, Tori and Alex, welcome to the Arts Commission, and we look forward to hearing from you very soon.
Thanks.
I know, we're like, yay! All right, perfect. Okay, so moving on to item number eight, discussion and vote on building applications, revisions for 3735th Street, that was heard in the last work session, as well as discussion and vote on the variance for 4011 31st Street and 40 and 4022 37th Street. We do have Alma, our interim co-director, and also Brian Neller, Brian Neller, former mayor and council member, and now appointed to the Design Review Board. Brian, you have a long, long list of like headings there. We need to like, you know, abbreviate them at some point. Here to present, so Alma, the floor is yours, and then we'll open it up to Brian.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for introducing me. We're here tonight to discuss and approve 3735th Street. And I know in the work session, they were approved and it needed to be completely, you know, put into the, to the, I guess, to the legislative and bring it up today. The owners were issued the, the, the building permit already. We just needed to, to go through this process and make it official.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Alma. And we also had the Design Review Board in the last meeting with the recommendation. So Brian Neller, can you let us know about the variances? And what is the recommendation from the Design Review Board?
So you're, Mayor, you're speaking of the 4011 31st and 4022 37th at this point?
Yes, those two. The other one, you already gave me recommendations, so we're just going to like formally approve it. But it'll be like 4011 and 4022.
Okay, so first of all, just want to acknowledge and appreciate the owners and architects of both of those properties for being very cooperative with the Design Review Board. 4011 31st especially, it is a house that they put an addition on the back of. You had the letters in the Design Review Board, but they basically hidden the addition of a small change to the dormer on the front to give them more living space on what was not really a usable attic space, now a second story. So the Design Review Board has recommended that you approve or support the variance to the zoning board. The same is for 4022 37th, which is at the corner of 37th and Shepherd. I'm not sure everybody's familiar with that. It's kind of a back corner of the town. It backs up to Brentwood. The only consideration there was that the Shepherd Street side was a little severe. It's up on a hill there above Shepherd Street. And so the architect was very amenable to changing some of the presentation. Came back at a second meeting and the Design Review Board was very supportive of the architect's changes. And so we're recommending to the mayor and council that you tell the, the Board of Zoning Appeals that the city council supports those variances.
Thank you, Brian. Council, you have heard a fair review from both Brian Neller from the Design Review Board and Alma, interim co-director. Do you guys have any questions for either of them? I will start this time with Luke, followed by Jared, followed by Jimmy. Go ahead.
If the Design Review Board recommends it, then I'm, I'm good with it. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Luke. Jared?
Sorry, find the mute button, unmute button. No, same, same, same comments as Luke. Just thanks for everyone's work on this and appreciate it. You bring it up for us.
Perfect. Jimmy?
I'm okay.
All right, perfect. Alma, are the owners here in the call as well?
Turn it up, Mayor.
Okay, just double checking so that way, or the architects, whichever. Okay, so you guys have heard the 3731st Street, you heard for summary was, you know, we all motioned to move to the legislative session because we were in support. 4011 31st Street, 4022 37th Street. And all of them have been supported by the Design Review Board. So I will, the question to you guys now is like, would you like to vote for them as in block or individually?
I move that we do as a block.
Okay, so Jimmy, we'd like to make the motion.
Seconded.
We approve each of these. Since there was no disagreement, that we approve the 3735th Street, 411 31st Street, and the 4022 37th Street.
Perfect. There's a motion on the floor. Will anybody second it?
Seconded. Sorry about that.
Second by council member Stolffus. Okay, any objections?
Mayor, Mayor, can we ask a question? So are you gonna, are you just going to send those letters from the DRB to the zoning board saying that you support the DRB? Is that how that's going to work?
So there's like a tiny little letter that goes on it along with your letter. It says like the board, the Design Review Board has recommended the variance to be approved. Mayor and councilman, this day they voted this way and they approved them. So we'll do the letter separately, but that's what it is. So we basically will attach the Design Review Letter with a small letter that's saying what the vote was and what the motion, the motion carries.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome, Brian. Okay, so you guys heard, so any ayes or yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
So, and I'm an aye, so the motion carries 4-0-0. So Melissa will work on the smaller letter. We already have a small draft together, right? Thank you, Alma, for helping us provide that. That will be sending out tomorrow to the board of variance, supporting the approval of the variance recommended by the Design Review Board. Okay? Brian, thank you so much for being so helpful to us, as always, to the whole community and Alma as well. And please extend that thank you to the whole Design Review Board as well.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Good evening. All right, so that is, that was item number eight. Can we move on to item number nine? That is vote on amending FY22 budget to reflect the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, line item 4698. Mayor and council discussed and vote to approve FY22 budget line item 4698 to reflect the appropriation of American Rescue Act funds, ARPA, from 1 million to 2.7, 2.7 million by the city manager, which represents the first half of the total amount. The second half will be received 12 months later. I wanted to make sure it was stated there so that way people did understood that because it's going to be aware to us in this, in this, in most likely in FY23. We want to make sure it was noted there so that when we went for the, when we went for a budget, with a new budget FY23, we remember that that amount is there to make it as clear as we possibly can. Mr. Kamali, you have the floor?
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. So as we know that the line item in the budget FY22, the line item number is 4698 in the revenue section. And it's stated for $1 million. So we're asking Mayor and council to approve 2.7 since we have received 2.71783, 2.75 million dollars from the state as an ARPA fund. So, and hopefully we get another 50% in next 12 months. So at this time, I'm just asking Mayor and council to allow me to correct that line item from 1 million to 2.71783, 2.75.
So, and to clarify, it's an update now because originally on the last budget, we didn't know how much money we're going to get. So we put 1 million there just to have it as a marker so that will be easier for us to adjust the amount instead of recreate a whole entire line item. So that was the reason why the difference between 1 million and the 2.7 is stand. So it was definitely done purposely. So thank you, Mr. Kamali. Mr. Kamali has given you a fair summary. Council, do you guys have any questions? Jared, Luke, Jimmy? Go ahead.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Luke?
Nothing at all. Good to go.
Jimmy?
No.
Perfect. Thank you. So I would love to entertain a motion to amend the budget at this time.
I'm moved.
Seconded. Seconded. Sorry.
So Melissa, when you write it down, make sure it shows to amend the budget, the line item and the amount from 1 million to 2.7, you know, and on. Okay? So it's been properly moved and seconded. Any objections? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this item passes 4-0-0. Okay. All right, moving on to the next item, a new business charter amendment, section 513, vacancy in, in office. And I just catch, it should be in office of council members because I think it's a different one, mayor, talks about the mayor. Okay, Mayor and council will have the, will have the first reading of proposed charter, charter change on special elections when there is a council vacancy. Jimmy, you have the floor?
Yeah, I will. Let me see if I can find it. Here it is. Can people-
Melissa, can you put it on the screen?
See it? Can people see it?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a, an amendment to the charter, which basically said, in the, what's underlying is, and bolded is new language. And what it basically says that when there's a vacancy, that's more than one year, the vacancy shall be filled by special election. If it occurs less than one year, then it will go through the current procedure, which is that we, the ward person, the other council person recommends to be up to three people and the, and the council votes to appoint someone. I, I feel and I think a lot of people feel that appointing people for more than a year and now, you know, possibly two people is somewhat, you know, doesn't really give people a chance to, to elect who they want their representative to be. We had discussed this in the work session and previously we had talked about six months. And there was some concern that by the time we did it, we'd be close enough to the election. So I kind of advised it to say that it has to be more than a year. So if there was a, again, a vacancy, we would go through the procedure. And the policy is that once there's a vacancy, there'd be an election. This is the way it is in the, between 30 and 60 days from the date of the vacancy. The procedures, my understanding is, you know, there has to be a first reading and it's a charter amendment. And if it's agreed to, if it's agreed to, we would, not agreed to, we would raise it again at the next legislative session. And, and after that, it would be effective 50 days after the, the, the passage of the charter change. We may want to just check of our, I would also recommend that we send it, that we should assign, we should ask the city manager to send it to the election board and to our, to our attorney for any tweaks in terms of the language that has to be done on this thing. It doesn't have to be this, I mean, we can still amend it at the next legislative session. So that's the, that's the charter change.
Hey, thank you, Jimmy. Luke, Jared?
Jimmy, I really appreciate you bringing this and getting this work done. I think this really strikes a good balance between making sure the election board doesn't have too much work sort of in a short time period where you would run an election and then six months later have another election. And also make sure we'll have enough people on board to finish a budget, get stuff done instead of having to wait to an election. I, I like the, I just like it. And I think given the vacancy that now exists here, it will give an opportunity for an election to happen. But I don't know what Jared wants to do there. I'll leave it to Jared to sort of decide what to do there. But I just think this is a, a good bill and appreciate your work.
Jared?
Yeah, Jimmy, I, I really appreciate you putting in the work, putting this together and massaging it, getting the language together. I, I, I was, you know, first time we came across, I was surprised that, you know, when there's a vacancy, you know, we don't have an election, we just have an appointment. I think, you know, it makes sense given a, if there's a short timeframe, like, you know, like three, four, five months, you know, obviously you're not going to have enough time to make an election, to have an election. But I think the way we set this out, you know, we have the opportunity for an election if there's a vacancy with a large amount of time. But if it's, you know, a year or less, given the time it takes to set up an election, run one, you may not end up with a lot of time for that person. Or you may not end up, you may not be able to finish the process in time. So appointment makes more sense. So in full support of taking this and moving it forward. And I know there's a, from my reading of the charter amendment procedures, there's a 50, 50-day unless a referendum with enough signatures is received by the 40th day, the process will move forward. So my intent is, you know, based on the fact that we have, we've talked about this. We have this, we have this charter amendment before us. We do need to run it through the process. And, you know, if there is any referendum feedback, you know, we, that would, that would alter the timeline. But my intent is to withhold the nomination of any, of any candidates in Ward, in Ward 2 so that until which time this referendum goes into effect, at which time we could then begin the process for a special election. Thank you.
Unfortunately to hear that, to be honest with you. Either way, you guys, I look forward to you guys picking up all the work because I would not. Saying that, Jimmy, thank you for putting this together. This is the first reading. This is not in a resolution format. The resolution format definitely needs to read. It's like showcasing the new and old information. The other thing before it comes to a reading, it is the custom for us to send it to the board of elections for them to tell us what their recommendations are when it comes to this matter. The fact that it's in front of us like, and it feels like you guys are ready to vote on the next meeting. It makes me very uncomfortable and I'll tell you why. We already went through it with the whole Arts Commission, then feeling like, you know, till the last minute, they were like pulled to say something and it wasn't a good feeling. So I want to make sure we avoid doing this also with the board of elections, especially because they're the one that could realistically tell us whether the election could turn around and take place in a month, two or three, depending what is the, that is required from them. The other thing that this brings into mind, had this been active in May, we'll be having three elections in less than four months. So I don't think this addresses that fully. And the reality is, it's like we cannot, it's going to be very difficult to have three elections in a very short time. Maybe this is the exception to the rule, but based on my experience so far, we will have had like the election, the regular election in May, an election for your position, my opposition, right? An election right now for Scott's position, giving us like three elections in less than five months. So I want to make sure that, hold on, make sure that we are fully aware that this is what we're doing with this. And if there is a caveat to put there that you can, there's a minimum, how many elections we could run a year, I definitely will, we appreciate it. The other thing is like even consulting with another member of the community was saying that, you know, even if this is enacted, like on the, on the, on the 13 month, right? We're definitely going to be coming in very easily into the 12-months path. So that means the board of election will have to turn around and have another election almost back to back. I mentioned to you guys that having run three elections in, in, what is it, five years or, it's been a lot. It's been a lot to the point that I definitely like thought about it because it's very short time from, from the learning curve to jump into a budget, going to recess, jumping to another budget and you're basically running another election. So I would say the next step for this is to take it to the board of elections. You definitely need to put this in a resolution because at this point it's- Um, you definitely need to put this in a resolution because at this point it's just a reading and this is the reason why I had mentioned it is to go to a work session so that will be an accurate reading because this has significantly changed from even uh the first proposal that was done uh two weeks ago. Um, and the council rules does state if they significantly change, uh we do need to like uh send it um, uh send it back. So I want to make sure we are following the right procedure. I don't want us to be rushing because we're trying to avoid having to appoint people. Um, but the reality of it is, it's like if we don't do this right, we are going to be um putting ourselves in a very uh bad situation, so please send it to the Board of Elections, um Mr. Kamali or Melissa, whichever, so that way we could get their um their feedback. But I definitely feel like they need to be part of the conversation. And we do have, hold on, Jimmy. Um, a hundred percent, uh, a hundred percent agree. Jimmy, go ahead.
I, I, I'm not sure who you, uh, I'm not sure I understand the three elections in five months. I mean, the next regular election isn't until uh twenty twenty-three. Uh, so uh this would be a possible election in, you know, in three months would be January, February, twenty twenty-two, so uh uh, I think, you know, it's a kind of, it's not like that quickly. Uh, this is a uh first reading. Uh, I would, uh, will Mr. Kamali uh send it to the uh, the attorney and also to the uh the Board of Elections for any comments at the work session so we can have a second, I mean, I would like to have a second meeting passage. Uh, I think giving the Board of Elections a month a comment, it's not like rushed, you know, there's a, you know, time to make comment about whether the this is, I mean, other cities do this, so I don't think it's that, that, you know, that crazy. If if there's, if there's any, that, let me finish, please. There's any need to tweak the language or change the language uh to make it uh, you know, applicable? That's fine. Yes, there was, we had it at the work session and after a good discussion, the work session, it was changed, so this is like the first reading at this legislative session.
So Jimmy, my remark wasn't in the future. My remark was if this was standing back in May, we've had three elections in the last five months. That's what I I was commenting. I want to make sure we fully take that into account. As if in the future, you have two council members leaving you will have a back-to-back um elections, so I just want to make sure that one, yes, a hundred percent take it to the, to the attorney, but we also need to give the Board of Elections um enough time to be able for them to review it. And at this point, yes, it has significant change to go from six months to a year. Um, and the, and that's what I'm saying, so at this point, it is, it is a document that we're reading, but it's definitely not in um not according to the, to the rules, so let's talk to Lori to figure out what the steps are, but a hundred percent the Board of Elections needs to um needs to review it, come back, you know, with some feedback and uh let us know where where they're at and what is realistically when it comes to the timeframe for them to be able to head an election, um, so that'll be good.
Point of order, I think we're on the second rounds as we went back to Jimmy, so I just mayor be.
I answered Jimmy's question, Luke, thank you. Okay, so um, second round, you have two minutes, go ahead. You wanted to say something, go ahead, followed by Jimmy, then Jared?
Yeah, I I would just think that um um, I I think getting the advice of the city attorney and the Board of Elections is very important before the next reading. Um, and probably have the Board of Elections attend um would be great. Um, and um, as well as have the opinion of our city attorney on this before the next meeting, so um, in addition to the request that this gets sent to the Board of Elections, make sure it also gets sent to Alyssa if there's consensus for that, so that she can tell us um, um, anything that we need to be aware of on that front, that's it.
Thank you, Luke. Jared?
Yeah, I would just concur with uh Luke's um, Luke's uh, Luke's points on this and again, Selena, I do I am, you know, I'm I'm cognizant of the um, you know, of the impacts uh that you mentioned and but I I do want to reaffirm that other cities have the same procedure uh and they've carried out that with um, you know, with no problem in the past, so I I feel like this is not agree that, you know, review by the city attorney, review. Um, you know, a review by the Board of Elections is, is fine. Um, but I want to, you know, I think this is, um, I think this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Jimmy?
No, I just hope we can, you know, you know, time is, you know, that we can get this done quickly, so uh you know, that we get comments that, you know, but it's pretty clear to you that people either like the idea or don't like the idea. It has to be tweaked, it has to be tweaked. People don't like the idea, then, you know, we can vote it down.
Yeah, let's make sure that for the, you know, I know we call this the first reading, but it has to be put in a resolution format that lawyers should be able to tell us in what way it has to be formatted. The other document that I read from MML, Jimmy, that you actually sent, it says it has to be sent out to a newspaper uh to be published, I believe, for forty days as well, so that way we alert the community that we are changing the constitution of Maranier and what the change will be. So I need to make sure that we are following um every single step, but also let's make sure that we give the Board of Elections um the the time and the, you know, I will say respect for them to be able to comment and let us know um what is doable. I'm not saying that this is not correct, all I'm saying is like, let's make sure we follow the procedure because I will hate to be put in this position once again. And then we're piling up like three elections, one after the other one a few months and it's not going to be doable, not even for the Board of Elections, Lisa alone, um, for for us as a city. Um, and at least, at least I'll tell you this, even with those two years, I like the fact that even as bad as the um elections have gotten, we have at least two years to heal before the next election. Um, I'm hoping that changes. I'm hoping that we have very positive elections, but two years to heal has been um, good in some, in some form and and I do have a concern that the short-term election might mean that before the wounds are healed in the city of where we opening and adding extra salt to it. So uh for next steps, definitely send it to the Board of Elections and to the city attorney, Mr. Kamali, uh, can you please take care of that with Lisa?
I will do that, Mayor.
And it's just, my understanding was that the forty days is after it passes, is that's why I read it, but maybe the attorney can tell us.
Correct. All right, so um, we'll leave this one alone, um unless you guys want to go for a third round, but I think at this point it seems like we all agreed to send it to the Board of Elections and to the attorney, but let's make sure the Board of Elections has enough time because if Alyssa makes a comment on this one and they haven't had a chance, it feel like we're going to be going back and forth between the Board of Elections and and the attorney.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Uh, this is Luke, sorry, Luke, go ahead.
Um. And so I think Mayor raised a good point about if, if this law were in place, April of last year and then in in Mayor was a city councilperson and ran for mayor. Um, and she, she won, we obviously had, you know, we we would have had to have another election for her seat soon thereafter. And then Scott resigns a month later, we'd have to have another election. One way to fix that is to say that if you're an, if you're a sitting councilperson and you decide to run for the office of mayor, you vacate your seat and your seat is automatically up for election. Um, that would be the way to avoid it, so so you you would have, so the decision for an elected official would be okay, if I want to run for mayor here, if I lose, I don't get my council seat back, I lose and that would you know, obviously be uh, uh, there, there's, I'm not, I'm not judging it as a good or bad thing, I don't, I I just thought of it, so I'm not putting judgment on it, whether it's a good or bad thing, but it would avoid the three elections in a short period of time, um, hypothetical, so um, just something to think about, um, that's all. Thanks.
Jared, you have something else to add?
Um, I don't think so. I I think Luke, that that idea bears some looking at and I think it would also balance out the, you know, for the mayoral election. Two council members right now get to compete for it without losing their seats, the other two have to um, have to give up, so um, that's, you know, certainly something worth them looking at and Selena, I just want to reaffirm, I I hear, I really hear all your concerns. Um, you know, I I think we're thinking about the opportunity to um yeah, I think the process for filling vacancies, I also, you know, I'm cognizant of um you know, the time involved for the Board of Elections and the time for um, and the time that uh, you know, the stakes to run, but I I still, I still do think it's important and to align, really to align our processes with those of neighboring cities. Thank you.
I think only one of them around us has this, but uh I will say something to you, Luke, about it, and Jimmy, I'm sorry, go ahead and you have the floor, my apologies.
No, no, I mean, I just, you know, again, I think the Board of, I mean, a month is not that shorter time for people to comment on the thing, so anyway, that, let's, let's move ahead.
So um, Luke, I'll say the final thing, I think that'll be even worse because even in this case scenario, you will have lost two council members and you will have to run the city and go through the whole, uh, much of, much of the budget process with only three people. So it'll make it even a worse situation, so think about that one. Um, okay, so Mr. Kamali, um uh, Mr. Kamali and Melissa, um, send to the Board of Elections for them to review. Uh, we could talk to Lisa about the process that we could get a more clarity while the Board of Elections is reviewing it, so we might be able to do two things at the same time. And once again, I do want to make sure uh we are fully aware this was not done in a resolution, it is just a document in front of us as being read and we're commenting on it. Um, the issue is they have to be done in a resolution and if the lawyer tells us otherwise, Jimmy, that's fine, but at this point um, it has to done, it, you know, the way I read the MML uh procedure was it has to done, it has to be done in a resolution. Um, to make sure is is clear and Alyssa tells, if Alyssa tells us otherwise, then I'll go wherever she is, but that's kind of where I'm standing right now with it.
Look, I said to the attorney and see what the process has done, if it has to be rewritten in some other form, whatever the attorney tells us.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jimmy, for your work on this. All right, moving on to the next item, uh Vice Mayor Rotation. Um, I put this on here because we do need a new Vice Mayor. Um, I was going to bring it up this year regardless because the last resolution that we have in place uh has me as the next, um, as the next Vice Mayor and obviously, um, you know, I'm not going to be doing both. Uh, right, so with Scott's departure, this opens up um for us to address it because in reality, there's other things the Vice Mayor needs to do and you guys to pick up um, uh, and, you know, basically carry the ball across of of things that were were dropped in many ways, but um, so I sent you guys to get emailed two proposals, but it was just for you guys to think of them, you guys could choose to, so at this point based on the rotation, like I said, I will be next. Um, Jimmy, this step, how do you call it, um, they got appointed for my position, so either A, um, we could have, uh, Jimmy, you could start your Vice Mayor term uh once approved and then we go the same way, Ward Two next will be Jared, followed by Luke. Um, yeah, so that's basically one, two, one, two, that way it's done. Uh, the other option we said is like have somebody to do, we could have even Luke do temporarily for right now until May, so that would give Jimmy a full year of Vice Mayor starting next year, May. And then we will have the same rotation as big, so that was two, but it was just for you guys to think about it, you guys make the decision, but the floor is yours. Um, we're going with you, Jimmy, uh, followed by Jared, followed by Luke.
Um, I'm open, I'm the junior person, I do have the time to help out if, you know, for flexibility purposes, uh, but uh, I would defer it to anyone else who wants to do it too.
Uh, Jared, Luke?
Uh, I mean, I'm I'm deferential to whoever wants to um, step in, so, especially as a new council member.
You're, you're coming a year uh FY twenty, uh, not year twenty-two, year May twenty-three, Jared. Based on the rotations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading that as, I was reading that as, as going forward, not, not a year from now, so I'm sorry, okay.
Jared, I was like, you're, it's not that far, I mean, if you really think it, like, uh, it's only a few months, like, it sounds like a long time, but twenty twenty-three is basically upon us. Um, yeah, so Luke?
Okay, I need to clarify something here for the public and for everyone. Um, the Vice Mayor role is, there is so much little work, it is such a small position, the only things that the Vice Mayor does are they take the closed session meeting minutes, um, which is like a two-page form where you probably have to write fifteen words in its entirety. Um, and then you have to read that summary during a meeting and it's probably ten words that you have to read during the meeting. And then the Vice Mayor, if Selena has to run because her child is watching pets on a parent teacher conference, you might have to take over the meeting for five minutes. Um, so it's a very, just to, I know there's confusion in the city about the Vice Mayor and it being a, but it is it is such a small amount of work and such a small position with no authority whatsoever. Um, just to clarify for everyone out there. Um, and um, so I am happy though to have Jimmy do the work.
I thought you were going to say yourself.
Now, I am happy to have Jimmy do that closed session stuff and be responsible for because sometimes saving the PDF doesn't work and the words you were, you do want in and so there's I'm happy to have Jimmy do the PDF work and I'm happy to have him do it for an extended period of time, maybe a year plus six months. Um, so I'm, I I am, I am happy to step away um from this very trivial work and have Jimmy do it. That's my recommendation, thanks.
You also need to make sure that you catch the meeting when Webex is like fighting against me. Uh, that that's like a a big one, so yeah, so one of the big responsibilities is the closed session package for us to be on track, to make sure it's on the agenda that they are read, uh, the summary is read, make sure you uh hand it over for safekeeping to the clerk. Um, step in in case uh I'm not around, that's um that's, that, that's, I mean, that's basically it, but we usually like to have one in case um, in case something is needed. So uh, the two proposal was, one, have Jimmy start his Vice Mayor rotation from here to May and then we'll like alternate, so that means that the next one after Jimmy will be uh Jared. So Jared, that might be next May, uh, followed by Luke. Right? That's basically, so it's word one, two, one. So is that what we're aiming at, to have Jimmy start uh his rotation um early?
Correct. Let's do it that way, yes.
Yep.
I need to make sure you're signing up to this, Jimmy, okay, so um, and if we all agree, we'll go ahead and put the resolution together um, that shows like the pattern, you know, the the May switch, okay? So Jimmy, um, I mean, you could start working as Vice Mayor, right, but uh, it will make the I'll bring the the official document on the next meeting, okay?
Okay, let's move on.
All right, so, all right, perfect. So Jared, your rotation is starting next May, so don't be jumping of joy.
No, 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 I'm looking, I'm looking forward to following Jimmy's uh Jimmy's footsteps.
Don't celebrate too much. All right, so uh, item number twelve, I put it here. Uh, you guys have the list of committees uh with uh the departure of the former council member, you guys have to reset the committees, so um, we are gonna at least temporary have committees until we decide uh to appoint or vote, whichever it is. And then the person um gets to be able to choose from some of the reset committees, all right, so um if any of you guys, you know, the easiest way for us to do it, I don't want to go into detail into that, we could just have a document, I just want to make sure it's here for the record. But I think the easiest way to do it, if any of you, um, if any of us, uh, was as um as a sub, you guys could always take a lead in the committee and if it's not, there's like a lot of them are are open, okay? So Jimmy, I think you had the last document, can you go ahead and share with council so that way um we could start filling in the gaps?
May I recommend that at the work session, I will prepare a, a, a list of the committees that uh Scott was responsible for uh and those where, you know, there's nobody who was uh also those where there's a a vice or an alternate to do that. And I'll put it together a list and we'll talk about it at the work session, is that all right, Mayor?
So Jimmy, I did, we have a, the next work session is in two weeks, so just uh, do you have the list? I mean, I have to look at the, just to make the list in case we have any meeting coming up. I know Alyssa, business mediation meeting is coming, I'm the outrun, so I was just gonna like, you know, move up, right? Right? But if there's any meetings from here to then, um, that we could fill in, let's just fill them. But it looks like.
I can share with you now. I mean, if you want, uh.
Just send it via email and then we'll sort it out between us. I don't think we have to have a record in the public for the meeting.
Okay.
Start out and then just send that, we'll send an email to the committees, letting them know like who's temporarily going to take over until we make the other decision. Okay?
I will send out the list, uh, you know, tonight.
There you go, Jimmy. That'll be your first, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, but all right, perfect. Uh, are we all in agreement with that? Just send it, uh, pick the ones that is, and then we could like, um, I mean, we don't really need to vote on them. We just need to work on them. Okay? We could make an announcement on the next work session, but I'll make sure we, uh, we, we have given a lead weight. So that we don't spend like 20 minutes discussing who's going to have what, what committee. All right? So council, can we move forward to the next item? Council?
Yep. Yes.
I like that next item.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Moving on to item number 13, adjournment of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
So moved. Seconded.
Then you go trip over that one. I improperly moved and seconded. Any objections? Any abstentions? Any yes?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
You guys go between ayes and, and, and yes so often. I don't know what to ask you guys anymore.
Eyes, stick to the eyes. We'll go with eyes. Now, now moving forward, we just do ayes.
That's what you all say. The person that said yes like four times. All right. So there are four ayes. Uh, the motion carries 400. Thank you so much. It is 8:47 PM. The meeting has adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to the staff as well for, um, all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you, council.
Council, have a good night.
And thank you, Melissa, especially on your first, uh, first meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. Well done. Way to go. We're not crazy. Don't worry. Don't run away. We're very sensible people with smart ideas.
Melissa's been up.
So we say.
Yes, I was a little nervous, but, um, now I realize it's really nice.
You're, you're, you're definitely smarter than most of us on that council.
Wait until you have to be here until 2 AM.
Try to cut that as much as we can, council. But anyways, thank you, thank you. Yeah, Jimmy, that's what you said, like 300 comments later. All right. Thank you guys so much and have a good night, everyone. All right. Bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.